Good evening. I would like to call to order the January 26, 2011, meeting of the Milton School Committee. In order to conform with the open meeting laws, I need to tell you that this meeting is being videotaped. Please rise and join me in saluting the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have one addition or change to our agenda for this evening. I'd like to delete executive sessions since we don't have a full committee. Does anyone else have any other additions or changes? Okay, so hearing none, we will accept this agenda as written, and we have no one here for citizen speak tonight. So Ms. Gormly will move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Sheridan.
Mr. Pavlicek said that I should announce before this begins that we've been in contact with DPW, and we'll watch the weather all night and make the school determination whether the school will be open in the morning. So no one has to wait tonight to find out. We'll wait until the morning. Dr. Drahter, we have the Milton High School Site Council, and joining us tonight, math teacher Vernon Nelson, Milton Public School parent, and Dr. John Drahter, high school principal. Would you join us at the table?
Good evening, Dr. Drahter and Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, thank you.
We'll turn it over to you.
All right. We did have a couple other people, but I think they were waylaid tonight a little bit in that. You know, for the, the high school in our site council, yes, what I'd like to share is just kind of how the process and what happens for us on, on site council. A lot of what we do is, you know, especially first part of the year with site council, I think they want information. It's a lot of important things to share information with them. So, you know, we go over all the scores, like the AYP and the SAT scores that I showed the school committee earlier, and AP and budget items and things like that. Those are all things that I present to them also. We also talk about initiatives that have been going on, like the bridge program and how that works. Mr. Nelson was vital to that this year and was one of the members of, who taught in the bridge program for preparing students for ninth grade and so on. Then we go through a lot of things, some of the real important things that are going on this year. We have for NEASC and school-wide rubrics, you know, our student advisory program that we're looking at. And we've been talking a lot about recently and where a lot of, I think, our initiatives are focusing and coming from is the ninth grade. That's always been a target grade, especially for parents, if they have students that are new to the high school, you know, what's it like? How's the school? Generally, after the students get through the, you know, ninth grade and the parents become familiar with the school, they become very comfortable. But the ninth grade year is still an important one, and it's important also because for students, they're not sure of what's going on. If there's a chance that you're going to catch them and instill new ideas or make changes, it's when something's brand-new and they're in an adapting phase. You know, later on in their careers, they're kind of set in their ways. So ninth grade becomes very important. So we've been currently actively talking about, you know, focusing in ninth grade on reading and writing, you know, and study skills. And there's also been a lot of talk, we like to continue to talk about mentoring and the role that that plays for student development in the school. So out of this will be ideas that germinate. I remember last year here, I was telling everybody about an idea that had come forward about teaching assistants. So that had come out of site council and actually a student who, you know, was a biotech student who said, gee, this is something. And we instituted it this year, so every department, students have the opportunity to sign up to be a teaching assistant. So if a student really likes, you know, cooking, I, we have a student that does that. So she actually works in a class with the teacher, so they get to continue to develop their expertise and show their leadership in it. You know, it happens in drama, it happens in sciences and math, happens in so many different things. But that's an example of an idea that came forward that says, wow, this can work, and we put it into play, and that's how it goes forward from there. I don't know, I guess, I'd like maybe if Mr. Nelson take, because if he was involved in the bridge program, if he could just give us a quick highlight of the bridge program.
Sure. The bridge program ran for four weeks this summer, Tuesdays to Thursdays, for four hours a day. And the idea of the bridge program this year was to have it more closely aligned with the start of school. So instead of running beginning of the summer, we ran in August. And the idea was that sort of transition to school a little bit more smoothly. Our target was twelve, twelve students for the program. We didn't quite achieve that, but that was our target. The students who came, the attendance was great this year. There were very few absences, if any. And I've been able to stay in contact with most of the students during the school year. Matter of fact, I got a very interesting little anecdote from one of the math teachers today, saying that this one student who we had in the summer scored a ninety-four on his Algebra I exam. So I was very pleased to hear that. And I've been checking on the students periodically, and I'd say most of them are doing fairly well, at least in the, that's what I follow up on mostly. So we taught them some basic math skills in the summer, some basic English skills, and also encouraged them to try and do some problem-solving things. We had some upperclassmen come by, do some activities with them in the summer, had a couple of field trips, just to try to keep them motivated and have them look at school as a positive place in terms of where they're going to begin the high school come late August.
And we should also add for the school committee and the public that that program was grant-funded, not through a grant, through the state that advocates for mentoring and transition programs to the high school.
It's very valuable, and so, thank you. So one of the things, though, from this, we'll see, I think, more and more ideas and formation come out of things that we can do to continue to enhance the study skills for freshmen. One thing, though, that I thought would be very good to, you know, get to the school committee on that we've talked about is our NEASC visitation that's coming up. It's next year, October 2nd through the 5th. But really, the work is, you know, by and large, done at the end of this year. We've been in the process for a year and a half now already, doing our self-studies and getting the reports together. So by the time we finish the school year, that will all be done and in the mail, and this will be very quick at the beginning of next year, they'll come out and do their site visit. But our heavy lifting is, is done during the self-study part. Just in that process, for everybody to know, in the self-study, we start, there's surveys that are done of parents, students, and teachers. Becomes a very important factual piece of that. Every single student in the school is given the survey. And we solicit parents, and we'll do parents at, you know, the open houses and conference times, and try to get as many parents as we can. Then, this is the process of, you know, putting together a statement of the critical strengths and needs of the school. You know, once the report's in, they will come back to us with a final report after their visit and give us target goals that they see as important things to work on. The standards of, you know, for the accreditation, there's seven standards. One's the core values, and you can see curriculum instruction assessment being the basic of the teaching standards, and then the school culture, leadership, school resources, and community resources. I had given, for your reading pleasure, there is a little bracket here, has all the different indicators of how each of the standards are judged. They go on, some of the standards can have twelve, fourteen indicators, and they get very involved in the number of things that you have to do about that. Here's some of the people that are key to this whole process. Steering Committee, we can see the Steering Committee of Brian Board, Michelle Kruse, Barbara Wright, Vernon Nelson, Kathy Quealy, Scott Devlin, Mary Ann Donnelly. They're the ones that are seeing the whole process through. The Steering Committee has been meeting regularly all last year, this year, and they organize and see that each of the committees are chaired by teachers in the process. So you can see also up there, each committee chair has the undertaking or the co-chairs of making sure that for their indicator, you know, their standard, all the indicators are talked about, addressed, that evidence is gathered, and the reports are written. So these are people who have, you know, stepped up and shown leadership in the school to take on these roles. Just in a quick, rather than have to read through all this, what's NEASC looking for? You know, in general, they're looking at a school that has a mission, and is mission-driven, in the sense that, you know, do we have a focus? And is that focus student-centered? And is all the things that we do contributing to that? Is our instruction in our curriculum, you know, driven by the expectations, what we expect from students? So it's, you know, the very importance of that kind of mission-driven school. The NEASC would talk a lot about school-wide 21st century expectations. I guess that's their latest buzzword. It could be a global community or whatever. It's kind of the updated version of making sure you're current with what you do. But the key is it's quality curriculum instruction available to all students. It's very important when NEASC comes, that if we say, oh, we teach higher-order thinking skills, that it's present and it's evident in all classes, not just AP classes, but the quality instruction and the opportunities available to everyone. And they're also kind of looking at dependable resources that support, you know, the delivery of curriculum instruction, our programs and services, you know, the consistency of, of that. So those are kind of the common themes that I would say go through all the standards that have to be addressed and some of the big ideas of, of what they are looking for. So that's kind of, I mean, we talked about this in site council too, but I thought this would be a good moment to share with you.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Just a couple, real quick, real easy ones, don't worry. The bridge program, was this the first year we had this bridge program, or have we had it?
No, we've had it for-
That's what I thought.
Yes, it's been four years, I'd say.
Okay. And so we have the funding for it to continue?
Yeah, it has been. So far from the state, the funding has come. I mean, we can mix in some MCAS funds, because some of these students had not performed well on the MCAS exam and things like that, but it's this grant money.
Okay. Can I just, I have a couple, the informal or formal mentoring that you're doing, Mr. Vernon, which I think is great, is that part of the bridge program, or did he take that on his own, or?
That is-
That's part of the bridge program.
Okay.
An commitment that we made in terms of working with the students.
Okay, that's great.
But we're also looking at that and talking about it in site council, us extending it and to be able to reach more and more students.
Right.
I mean, one of the keys, like this year, when we did pretty much the school-wide read, and, you know, a key component to student success, the students that became doctors and that were, you know, people that they could connect to, that encouraged them along the way and made things possible. So we're, we see that. I think it's done all the time in classes and different settings, and we're trying to formalize the process to that.
May I follow up on that? To that point, Milton Public School parent Anne Comber, who's also been active on the MFE, has a meeting scheduled with Dr. Drahter, John Phelan, and me, and Kristen Bagley-Jones had been involved, interested in helping us, looking for funding for mentoring. And it's interesting to me that our teachers go out on these visits to other schools in New England, and then they come back and we debrief with them. Because NEASC, just as I say to people, schools and school systems are dynamic and changing, what are they looking for during these two years, or these three years? What's, what are the highlights? And they've come back, and one of the standards asks for every student at Milton High to have a mentor other than their guidance counselor. John? And so, again, they know what it takes to be a successful high school. NEASC is the bellwether. They are the judge. They, they have the data. They know what makes a successful high school. And mentoring, to Dr. Drahter's point, mentoring and more individuals that students identify with, again, increases student achievement. So Dr. Drahter has been exploring different avenues so that we can put programs in place, but mentoring and formal mentoring requires funding. You know, we think all of our teachers and coaches and club chairs and all of us at the table are mentors, but they're looking for a formal mentoring program. Am I right, John?
Yes, exactly.
Just, I actually was going to ask a mentoring question too, so I might as well ask it now. Two things. So one, I know that they do have a mentoring program at the middle school, and is that model looked at to continue at the high school?
Well, we've had, over the course of time, we've had, we've run, I would say, three or four different mentoring programs. Even last year, there was one that Yolanda Beach ran. You know, the challenges are finding, you know, the key components that reach a student, that create the success and so on. And volunteer mentoring is good, and it sometimes works, and sometimes students connect, and it happens. We're trying to find a way to get beyond the sometimes to a, to a more structured process. Because some students, you know, they're eager to learn, some kids are kind of begrudgingly come to learn, and others seem to be less enthusiastic about it, to being, you know. So we have to find ways to reach the more challenging students.
And another thing on mentoring, I know that a few years back, and I don't know if it's still continuing, but there was a program where the freshman class was visited by an upperclassman that went in and went on a regular basis. Does that still continue?
Yes, we're still doing that. That they, in that, we improved it this year, that every student in the Student Leader Program met with their students before school even started. So we kind of let them work with the students and, so they got to know them. And part of that is just to make the students feel as welcome as possible at Milton High School.
Yeah, I think that's a great program, because it not only helps them have a familiar face when they walk in the door, besides the classmates that they've come in with, but it also gives them that go-to person if they have a question that they might not feel comfortable asking someone else. So I think those are all great programs and worth commending you for. Thanks. Mrs. Kelly?
So the Student Leader Program is a form of mentoring, or?
I think it, you know, when we look at the resources that we have available, there can be some very effective kind of models of peer tutoring, peer mentoring like that. So we find that using our, you know, great upperclassmen with their talents and accomplishments, you know, it's something that the new students will look up to. So we want to use that form as a, you know, for, give them a goal of what to aspire to, what it looks like. This is, you know, I can do this too. So I think in the capacity, it's, you know, it feels another one of the components of, of a full picture.
And, excuse me, during activity period?
Yes.
Is that a possibility for sort of creating a mentoring structure? I guess-
Yes.
Here's my concern. And I think mentoring is fabulous, and I think it's definitely what's needed to create a really successful high school. But there's so, there's only so many hours in the day, quite frankly. And when we, we go to start talking about what the 21st century expectations are, I don't know how we fit it into a school day, and nor do I think it's reasonable to expect that teachers, you know, work way beyond what's expected of them to accommodate this. So I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way within the structure that we presently have to try and create the possibility of, of, you know, creating that mentoring program within that format?
Yes, well, that very much so. And actually, we have a committee of teachers working on, on that idea and to discuss, and they're coming forth with a proposal on how to incorporate part of the, as Superintendent Gormly said, the network of having an adult in the building that is another recognized person that a student is, feels comfortable with, and they can go to. And we're exploring that actively, and shortly, we should have for that a model out so that this is just another part of the picture for students. Because some students, you know, they're great with the coach, they love outdoors club, or the, you know, different things, and, you know, they're connecting with teachers. And this is one that every teacher there can find out how each of their students are doing. And then, to me, there's also then the mentoring of when someone's struggling, to be able to pull that piece out too. But yes, you're very right. Activity period is one of our, our target goals to kind of weave this in.
Great. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Just to follow up on the mentoring thing, there's been lots of different conversations, Anne Comber with you, on the health and wellness. I mean, we're all sort of coming at it because we know that this is really the thing to do in high schools. So a lot of people have different ideas and we're trying to pull it together. But really, just to sort of put it out there to my school committee members, I hope at some point, we come back to you with a proposal for a formal mentorship program that happens after school, and that is a stipend. But we're looking for grants for that. We're looking to partner with successful programs. Chris is setting up meetings with us, with Mass Mentor and with Step Up, who's a very successful program. That happens after school, and teachers get paid extra for it, not from our school budget. But it's a comprehensive mentor program, and Dr. Drahter should be commended for trying to do, really piecemeal, putting this piece in, putting this piece in, and that's great, and that might be all we can do. But ultimately, I hope that the school committee and the school department can go to a more formal mentoring program, because I think we really need that. But I just wanted to say that. I know you're doing a great job with it.
Well, I think it's, hopefully, it will be a comprehensive picture eventually. I think we're getting close with the advisories during activity, with, you know, bridge program that tries to take kids beforehand, tighten up the whole study skills piece of ninth grade, and then still find also, you know, to me, it's all the safety nets, and it's putting them all together.
Mrs. Kelly?
So the one other question I had was, in the self-study-
Yes.
The high school is a resource, not only for the people who work within the building, but for the kids who come, for the families who send their kids, and as, from my perspective, the people who don't as well. And I'm wondering where the connection is with the community and how that, and not just in a survey. To me, it requires a conversation, you know, feedback, et cetera, and I'm just wondering where, where that comes into this picture.
Yeah, that's, I think you bring up an excellent point. You know, and I've served on four different visiting committees myself, and that component, I think, is subtly there. But for NEASC, it has not been an overt criteria to see how the high school serves the greater community. But I, you know, you raise an excellent point to, you know, that we should have as a standard, whether NEASC has it a standard or not.
I think that, well, and I'm not only talking about how it serves the greater community, but, but even who the high school is. When we talk about our mission, is that something that everyone agrees to? And then, when you go from mission to some of the details down below, all the way down to what we offer in our, in our classes, isn't that really a community conversation that should be had, rather than one that's held only within the high school staff? Do you know what I mean? Because it seems to me that it is a community resource, and therefore, understanding what the community's capacity is, along with what the community's desires are, would be an important facet of that whole self-reflection.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Can I just ask her a question? I think I understand what you mean, but could you give an example? Because I'm not sure I quite get what you're getting at, and-
Well, one of, one of the things that I think is part of a high school is, okay, what's our graduation requirement? And essentially, that's saying to the community and anyone else, this is what we believe is a minimum standard for our kids to leave our schools and go on and succeed. And I don't know that we ever take a look at that. And it would seem to me as part of a self-evaluation, that would be an important, this would be an opportunity to do that, not, again, not only within the building, but with the community at large. And I, you know, granted, I'm coming to this late, I don't totally understand the process, but at some point, whether it's within this cycle or not, I think that's an important piece to get to. You know, whether it's in a future year or whatever, that's fine. But it seems to me that based out of the last report that NEASC created for us, you know, there were a couple of big gaps. One was community support. Well, if you don't have the, if you don't have the communication with the community, it's tough to say you didn't support us. So, and granted, we support, we have conversations around dollars, but we don't necessarily have conversations around offerings and, you know, what's required to, to provide the offerings that we want to do, et cetera. And I think, again, that's part of those opportunities to connect with the community, as we're taking this opportunity to, to review where we're at.
Good. Mr. Pavlicek?
Well, just following up on that, I think part of it is, in NEASC, where you talk about the missions and expectations, NEASC doesn't want to know just what your mission is. They want to know, how did you come up with that? What was the process that got you there? Does it drive, I mean, is a lot of the things that you're getting that. NEASC, this self-study report, you have to, it's a really good, actually, programmatic review of your, of your entire high school, that you have to justify everything you believe you're doing. And you've got this panel coming in from outside, you say, of course, we're doing this. And then you have to sit and have to say, now, if someone doesn't know we're doing this, how do I show them that we're doing this? How do we show them that our expectations run through all our courses? How do we show them that we have all these involvements that we say we have and we know we have, but, you know, where, where's the assessment on it? Where's the feedback? And that, that's the, the big part of these, these NEASC documents, and why you have so many teams and so many players putting such enormous documents together. And it, it's funny, the way NEASC works, I'm working on one right now for a college, where they say, well, you have to limit your self-study to 200 pages. You know, because it can easily run way beyond that when you have to do all these things. Now, they don't count the appendices, which are another 10,000 pages probably. But, you know, these are enormous documents, an enormous amount of work to try to justify every, you know, to try to validate everything you do. It's, you know, if it's done right, it is a great exercise for, for the institution, showing that we are doing what we want. But yeah, they ask for a lot of things. There's, there's no question about it. It's, it's not an easy exercise to write that eight pages on the mission and, on mission and core values. You would think, well, we have mission and core values here, they're done. And it's, it's not at all easy to write that out.
Two items. One, to Mrs. Kelly's point, it was interesting to me that some of the teachers that have gone on site visits would come back and schools, high school would say they have rubrics. But then, when the visit happens and the questioning happens, we have rubrics, but they're not being used by the teachers. And so, on behalf of John Phelan, Matt Gillis, and myself, and John Drahter, this is NEASC, and this visit are huge to me. Because to Mrs. Kelly's point, I believe this town is its schools, and the schools are the town. And, you know, you think about all the community groups that we're involved with. I could list 20 community groups, parents, and we meet with groups with, that have people outside. We're involved with Fuller Village. We could just go on and on and on. But to the point of NEASC, it's a wonderful self-reflection, and it also provides you a roadmap. So it's, it's very, I support NEASC 100%. These are people, this is a group, who they research what makes an outstanding high school. They're going to come in and evaluate us with our own materials. We get a chance to put out our own materials, and then they come up with a roadmap. And so, they know what an outstanding high school looks like for students' achievement, to Mrs. Kelly's point, to be involved in the community. So I think this self-reflection- So, I think this self-reflection is a very interesting concept. And, you know, now, we should look perhaps in the future to have the middle school accredited and to go through that process. Because again, the value to me is you get a roadmap and you get an outside group that knows what they're doing, that evaluates you. And when you talk about resources, I want John Drahter to start providing me articles for my email blast because I think NIASC, if we all remember the last time that the high school was accredited and the whole issue about community resources and using the NIASC study and the new buildings. And they, I was there and they centered in on the condition of the buildings and the resources. They actually look at your budget. They know what your community can fund, they understand the funding sources for communities, and they look with a different set of eyes at what we're doing. So, again, to all the staff and the teachers who are serving and the parents, it's a tremendous amount of work. I support it 100% and it's only going to be good for the town of Milton and Milton High School.
I totally agree, Ms. Gormly. And I think that the feedback that you talk about, the roadmap, is just critical to making improvements. So, you present the self-reflection and then we get that very valuable feedback from them. Could you just speak for a moment to what a rubric is? Because some people at home might not understand the whole concept of a rubric.
I'll let Dr. Drahter.
Yeah, I'll give you an example of, you know, one of our expectations of student learning is that, you know, students communicate effectively. Now, we keep it kind of general because in an English class, communication might be writing a, you know, five paragraph essay. But you're also going to be communicating in an art class and expressing in a different way, you know, in science or math and so on like that. So, we have, you know, we take that idea of what it means to communicate effectively and then we write and say, how do we know if someone is like excellent at it? If they're decent at it? If they're kind of struggling with it or they're not that effective? And what are the components of it? So, it's a grid in a sense that maps out, how do you know when somebody is at what stage they're at in it?
But it's also important, sorry, Dr. Drahter, but because it allows the students the opportunity to self-reflect on where they are and where they need, what they need to do to reach the higher level. And I think...
Right, and understand clearly what it is and what they need to do is right.
Exactly. I think they're very valuable tools for students today.
Yes.
So, thank you for that.
Sorry, one more question, comment. It's about resources. And when I look around the table, I realize that most of us have or have had kids at the high school and we've all loved it. So, I just really want to publicly say, people really love Milton High School and it's been a good experience for those of us with kids of different ages, so we can all attest to that generationally. When you look at resources or needed resources, what comes to your mind? And I'm not going to ask you to answer this now because I'm putting you on the spot, but a lot of questions I've been getting is about if we have to cut the budget the way we were, that we might have to cut from four years of science to three. And people are asking me, well, how would we do that? And I'm not putting you on the spot to answer that now. I just want to raise it that that's an answer that's being asked out there and I don't know how to answer it. And I think that has to come from you.
Well, they are struggles. I've, you know...
You don't have to answer it now, though. I put you on the spot.
Well, I just ask a thing. I mean, it's not just two, it's not just a once every 10-year event. At the end of every year, I have to write to NIASC and explain any substantive changes that have occurred and say, are we still able to deliver the quality education and fulfill our mission? You know, have we found a way? Sometimes you make a cut and it still, though, you can maintain the program and you can still do that. So, that's the struggle to kind of, because there's a reality of budgets and we still keep trying to find a way to get it done.
Okay. Just to clarify, is that cut that's being proposed, I think it's five sciences to four, not three to, four to three, as you're saying?
That's not the way it was explained.
The way it was explained was three years of science versus four.
We, Dr. Drahter and I have met and Dr. Drahter did the research in comparison to what it would mean or what it would look like this year in terms of how many students would be impacted. And we talked about it as recently as this morning, so I'll let John describe what that would be.
Yeah, some of it was, we did have, I mean, sometimes it's like that. And I think the points you bring up is that, you know, the school, and we, there hasn't been a rediscussion too much of the standards for graduation, you know, the credits, 120 credits, because Milton has an excellent one compared to other communities and we set a very high standard. But in that, there is, in that expectation from the school committee, an expectation that students only need three years of science. You know, if you want to change it to four years of science, then it can be, but, you know, but not that, that's not the, the critical part of this is that we actually have students that take five years, they'll double up. So, part of it was looking at, okay, this student is doubling up and they're taking an extra science class. And I think most of that proposed cut can come out of students who are taking a fifth year as, and still maintain the four years.
Okay.
And, you know, it would have to force up some class size because anything is going to do that. But you look at places again where, you know, where can we manage to still deliver the quality education that we want here if we have to take a cut?
And to that point, Ms. Kelly and Ms. Bagley-Jones referred to our budget cuts. We, as we've gone out to the schools, we amended our budget cuts with the PS Latin issue. We now have sat down with Dr. Drahter and to finance subcommittee, we're going to make a proposal really changing and the high school cuts, the same number of cuts, but detailing them. This is a work in action. And then, John Phelan has worked with James Jet. And the middle school cuts will also be detailed differently. And John Phelan has worked with all of the principals and prepared impact statements that we're going to send out Friday to the finance subcommittee, have them edit, see if they meet their expectations and then put them out to the whole school committee next week. So, to the school committee's point, we did when we first put the information up and then we charged Dr. Drahter with going back on the science. We heard parents on the science and actually estimating next year who that would impact. And again, it would be fifth year and students would be able to take four years, but some of the class size would increase. So, that's all going to be in those impact statements. But the first draft you did get, we did refer to the fourth year.
Thank you for coming.
Well, initially, yeah, if we can, you know, you get a look at how the kids do and, you know, they're taking a lot of classes.
Yeah. So, Dr. Drahter, could you just identify who the other members are of your site council? Because you do have community, do you have a community member still?
Yes, we do. You know, Vicky McCarthy comes to our site council meeting regularly. I mean, Ena Gamer has for years in the past, Lee Carey as a community member has been a regular attendee for a long, long time.
Many years.
You know, and then we have students from every grade, one student at each grade level. And, you know, we have some other teachers too and, you want everybody's names?
No, that's okay. Just, I think it's important for everyone to know that...
Parents and some pa...
They're parent members too. So, there's broad representation on the school's site council.
Yeah, it's very broad. It's a great forum I rely on. It, because there are very rich discussions that come out.
And having served on it, I can recommend it to anyone that's watching at home to get involved in the high school or any school site council. Mrs. Kelly?
So, we've been talking at other school levels about common assessments. And I guess from a high school perspective where we sort of branch out in terms of special specializations, although we have, you know, groups of classes that are taking the same course, do we have those common assessments in place for the high school? And because, you know, when you, we have a very good way of looking at third through eighth, but then there's a gap, there's no ninth, from an MCAS perspective, there's no ninth, and then there's tenth, and tenth is the graduation requirement, which I think leads to its own set of issues. But, you know, our offerings go through 11 and 12 and being able to sort of assess how we do with regard to those course offerings and how our kids do, I think would be an important thing to be able to present at some point.
Okay, that would be fine. Because one of the things in us was with each of our departments was to really enhance common assessments across each of the departments. And a lot of progress has been made on that and it's very likely that all the mid-years are, most of them are common.
And so, to that point, Dr. Drahter had come and shared his data, so I asked for the NIASC presentation at our site council. But our next meeting, we'll be talking about math at Milton High School and PS and those assessments. And then, within the month, we'll bring you back to Mrs. Kelly's point on assessments at Milton High School.
All right.
Maybe the department heads with you.
Before I forget, we concluded our site council meeting with a commitment, a commitment to the walkathon that's coming up, February 12th. You know, site council wholeheartedly endorses it and encourages everyone's participation, one to four at the high school on February 12th.
Okay.
Well done.
But the big question is, what student-faculty game are you two going to play? Dodgeball? Three points?
Being a target isn't...
And I want to know if Gormly is going to be on too.
Well, there'll be games, events, a lot of interesting things going on. So, it will be an event, a fun event.
Thank you for all your help. And if I might, before we leave that, when we talk about schools and this fundraiser is in the hands of the students and it's not even over and Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdet sent an email out to every high school staff member, what are you going to do in this year's talent show?
The talent show is winding up.
And so, I have to tell you that I waited a long time to see a faculty talent show and it was worth the wait. And to think that the teachers came together to, two nights, I wish secretly that it was just a one-night talent show.
Not so secretly any longer, Ms. Gormly.
And they raised that money for clubs and activities and athletics. And so, to Ms. Bagley-Jones's point, the walkathons in the hands of the students and the talent show, and at those two events, nobody is there because they think it's a fundraiser. And out of something bad came something good. It builds unbelievable morale.
And the talent show is Pierce and the high school.
They have.
And it sells out two nights. It's a standing room only.
We're sitting with two stars, John Phelan and John Drahter.
Oh, yeah, yeah. John Phelan, maybe, myself.
And Dr. Drahter, thank you for all the extra work you've done. I know we're driving you crazy to, you had to go to Pierce today, you did an assembly at Pierce.
Yep, we had a great, the kids were wonderful there. They were students...
So, thank you for that.
...to all the bow. Milton High is great because we have so many great kids.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now, I'd like Holly Concanon to join us at the table. And welcome, Holly. Holly Concanon is our elementary math and K- through A technology director. Ms. Sheridan asked if she's, tonight she's wearing her math coordinator hat. Another night she'll come and wear her technology hat. And Holly, I don't want to embarrass you, but Holly has...
Yes, she does.
Holly has joined the Milton Public Schools and given us more than 100%. She's in those classrooms. I want to compliment you. You know almost all of the 2,000 children's names. You have identified with every teacher, teams of teachers doing professional development and you're making a difference in the Milton Public Schools. And I want to publicly recognize you and compliment you on your work. Thank you.
And I'm enjoying it. It's a wonderful place to be.
So, your presentation.
Thank you. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and talk about a project that I'm really excited about. It's been a great chance for me to get to know the staff and the students even better working on this. And I just want to say that this is a continuation of really great work that started before I came. And we're building on the strengths of the teachers, of their reflection on the curriculum materials that we use and their high expectations for the children. So, this common assessment project actually is coming out of some work, like I said, that has started before me. And what happened was there was a collaborative team of grade-level representatives from every school that started to work on these scope and sequence documents. And that work is now continuing today. This began with documents that I will talk a little bit more about in a few minutes. And out of those scope and sequence documents, the teachers and administration began to develop common assessments that have been used over the past few years. There are pre-tests, a mid-year and final assessment for grades K through 5. These were developed based on Massachusetts state frameworks. These support the high expectations that teachers have, but they are very different than the assessments that come out of the everyday math curriculum that we use. We are currently working on end-of-unit assessment for grades 1 through 5. So, similar to the standards-based assessments that we have for the beginning, mid and end of year, these would be consistent assessments that would be used in all four elementary schools at the end of every unit. We will continue to work on adapting these materials to meet the needs of our students and also to meet the expectations of the Common Core assessments that Massachusetts has adapted. So, I talked a little bit about the scope and sequence documents and I also, for your reading pleasure, have those today. Yes?
Can I just ask a question just because I don't have any idea? The Massachusetts curriculum standards that were in place versus Massachusetts or whatever, Common Core expectations for math, how, has there been a lot of change or...
Well, Glenn can speak about this very well. Massachusetts has agreed to adopt them for the upcoming school year. However, there may be, there will be some changes. Massachusetts already has high expectations and we actually, and Glenn, please join me, we have led the way in this reform. So, there are changes from Massachusetts, not as drastic as in other states. Many states are striving to keep up with us. So, yes, there are some changes, but I do think that we already have high expectations. There will be minor changes throughout the year. In some cases, the focus is more on specific content skills and I think it minimizes the range that students have to work with. So, we're working towards mastery.
Want to give Mrs. Kelly an example?
I'd be happy to, but Glenn did you one.
Well, I mean, there are a couple of different areas. For instance, the standard on what they call probability and statistics, that works down to the elementary level of your, very basic probability, is pulled up a little in the grades, it's not pushed down quite as far. And in its place is a little more computational dexterity that's been dropped grades lower. It's manipulations in where things fall more than the topics covered. So, there's really just a sort of realignment of the various different topics to slightly different grades. So, you're not trying to do so many broad things in one grade and maybe a little more focused on a fewer and slightly more deep coverage on some topics. The, the mass curriculum frameworks were ahead of the Common Core on many things and Massachusetts is trying to figure out exactly how many extra things we're adding in to the Common Core to keep the standards high. You're allowed to add a certain amount to them in each state. And for many states, it's a question of going up to them. In Massachusetts, how much can we add and still stay within the amount that we're allowed to add?
Many teachers were disappointed and felt as though...
Which is why I raised the question, quite frankly. If we believe as a school system, Massachusetts, federal, quite frankly, put aside, that we were doing the right things, we have the right standards in place, that we had, you know, we were developing those assessment tools that were helping us, I don't understand how or why, unless things were moving, you know, from one grade to another and therefore the testing, the, whatever the assessment will be, MCAS changed or whatever that process is going to be, would put our students at a disadvantage, I don't know why we wouldn't maintain those same rigorous standards.
So, you actually are speaking on behalf of, half of, more than probably the majority of our state. And that's why we, the state has agreed to adopt them with the agreement that we will, Massachusetts will be adding some standards to the Common Core.
And just another point as another example, comparing the town, the Milton Public Schools to the state and maybe to the Common Core. The Common Core and now the state, the state has always said that the MCAS exam is primarily in eighth grade for math, a pre-algebra exam. We teach Algebra I in eighth... We teach Algebra I in eighth grade. So we, as a district, have always maintained a higher expectation than even the state standard. And we will continue to do that relative to the Common Core. We still will be teaching Algebra I in eighth grade for the majority of our students. And because the standard might be X in the Common Core and the standard might be X plus one for the old Massachusetts state frameworks, we'll let them work that out in terms of where we can fit that in so we can be aligned with them. But our everyday math curriculum, our curriculum is really a notch above in our expectations for our own students and we will continue to do that.
And to Mrs. Kelly's point, wasn't the race to the top connected to the Common Core?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was in the later version.
Right.
So with that being said, I don't expect major changes to the assessments that we have already and the scope and sequence that we have. I do expect minor changes. Again, we're in a very good position being in Massachusetts and also using the everyday math curriculum, which is an aggressive curriculum and often goes above and beyond the grade level standard now. So the scope and sequence documents, they were developed. We're continuing working on making sure those explain exactly what our kids will be held to. And these documents articulate the current state standards. And these are the standards that will be tested in MCAS this year. And they also include assessment opportunities by month. Now, these assessment opportunities might include the common assessments I already talked about, but they also have included informal assessments throughout the unit as well as end-of-chapter assessments from everyday math. It also includes the everyday math lessons that will support standards-based instruction. So why common assessments? Why are we spending our time and our energy working on these right now? To be perfectly honest, this was happening already. We have excellent teachers in Milton Public Schools who took it upon themselves to do this work anyway. And it was happening in so many different pockets across the district that, number one, it made sense to get a team together and have this, have these teachers work collaboratively to save time and energy for all. Also to promote consistency among the four elementary schools. A goal would be that if a student were to transfer in and out of any school, that they would walk into the same curriculum and be able to pick up right where they left off. Another goal would be to generate data regarding student achievement and also if students are meeting Massachusetts state's standards. These common assessments will assess strengths and weaknesses of our curriculum based on standards-based questions. Our goal would be to create a collaborative culture where teachers can talk about what's going on on a day-to-day basis and also the trends that we see across the district. Already, the common assessments, the pre-test, the mid-year, and the final, those do drive instruction. We have seen strengths and weaknesses come out of those. In fact, last year, the mid-year was very indicative of how our students did on the MCAS. In fact, students who were proficient with an 85 or above on our mid-year were proficient or advanced on our state test. So we felt like it was a great barometer for how our kids are doing. And also, it's pushing the professional development needs for our district. And we're already talking, you know, on an elementary and middle school level of how to provide professional development in content areas for both sets of teachers. So what does the common assessment structure look like? Our everyday math assessments tend to be very long. They tend to take up a lot of class time. And teachers were deciding which sections to use and which sections weren't being used. And that wasn't always consistent, so our expectations weren't consistent. So the goal of these assessments would be 10 questions in all grade levels. And the 10 questions would be distributed among three types of questions. The first of which is multiple choice, pretty self-explanatory. I'm sure you've all had one of those. We also have a short answer where students are expected to solve a problem and show their work. And this could be just a numerical answer. And then an open response, and this is really pushing the expectation high here. In an open response question, students have to apply critical thinking skills. They have to be able to break down the problem. And they also have to be able to answer multi-step problems with labels, explain their thinking with numbers, pictures, words, all of which will be present on the MCAS. So another goal of these assessments would be to provide a vehicle for students to become familiar with this format. Oftentimes in third grade, it can be a scary test for a third grader because it's the first time they see questions like this. Our goal is to get them in the habit of answering different types of questions. So applying the content they've learned through everyday math in any format. So again, continuing the work with everyday math, continuing using some of their assessment, but also testing out that content in a different vehicle like this.
And these are starting at first grade, correct?
These are, we have a team right now. We meet regularly, grades one through five. The kindergarten team has, they're actually ahead of the game. They've spent a considerable amount of time with Ada Rose Marin. And they also have common assessments put in place. At this point, it doesn't feel necessary to push the kindergarten any harder than they're being pushed right now. So yes, they're starting in first grade. In first grade, they're learning how to address all of these types of problems.
Could you say what grade these?
Yes, I should address that.
Let everybody guess.
Do you want to take a guess?
At the answer or the grade?
The grade. And I won't put you on the spot like you put John Drotta on the spot. Grade five. These are grade five questions and they're fair. They're fair. Our kids are working very hard. It's amazing what they're being asked to do in elementary right now. Yes?
I just want to add, to give Holly a lot of credit as well as the group of teachers that she is working with on these questions. You just can't kind of make up a question. There's a lot that goes into creating a question that solicits an answer that revolves around a standard that the students will be engaged in and that relates to that standard. And it also reflects that every fourth grader will take, every fifth grader will take this in the same week of the school year. So no matter where you go in between October 12 and October 16, every fourth grader will have a quiz in front of them that's 10 problems. And it doesn't mean it's triple points for them if they do well or not. This is more importantly, a data tool for us to look at how our students are doing on a very clear targeted question that's crafted in a very strategic way to solicit whether or not they understand the standard. That data is then looked at by all the teachers that Holly works with to see how they're doing across that grade, across that class, across that school, across the whole district. So I think that people think that, well, why can't you just make up a whole bunch of questions? It's like, you know, make a crossword puzzle, see how easy that would be. The questions are difficult to create. Then you have to have banks of questions that go throughout the years. And then you have to make sure that they're aligned with the curriculum and the standards. And I think Holly's done a great job and the teachers have done a lot of great work. And I think that that work done by the teachers has essentially created a very collegial environment at the elementary level for the thirst of those conversations that now are starting to revolve around instruction. So how do we get the kids to this level? How do we engage them? And why are 73% of the students getting these answers correct? We would like 100% of them to get it correct. So what are you doing in your room to get the kind of response in a positive way? So this is the accountability in the process is fantastic. But the side benefits of teacher discussion and creating high expectations for students is really the magnifying force to make students engage.
John, if I could just add to that, the teachers have been instrumental in this process, but you hit the nail on the head because what's coming out of this is that teachers are, first of all, having the opportunity to talk to each other that unfortunately, they don't get during the day. There's just not enough time in the day, like you said earlier. So they're having time to discuss what's going on in each classroom. And they're really bringing out the needs to support everyday math. Yes, it has very high expectations. It is a rigorous program. But just like any other program, it's not perfect and there are holes. So along with each of these assessments comes a teacher's note from the teachers who have created these tests that say, make sure to focus on this. Don't forget this vocabulary. This isn't strong in everyday math, so you may want to supplement with this. So those conversations and the professionalism from this group of teachers, it's a joy to do. I actually look forward to these meetings and you're right, it's much more than the assessment.
And so if I was watching and I were a parent, I'd say, how does this translate to my child? Well, a teacher is in isolation in a fifth grade in the school, but you're providing opportunities for those teachers to learn from one another across the district. You know, you come to us and you'll say, this teacher, this student assessments are outstanding. You're observing those teachers, finding out their techniques, having them in meetings, sharing those techniques and strategies with their peers across town. And again, that's how it translates. It's improving the instruction of every teacher in the district to thus then improve the achievement of every child in the district.
That's right. And these teachers work very hard. So it's not often that they accept praise or say how great they are. It's more, what can we do better? And how can I improve my instruction? And they're doing some fabulous work and this is going to help us get even higher results.
Holly, will you, I mean, I just, Holly, will you share with the committee and the public the email you sent to me? Holly Concanon and Dr. Spalding do a little tutorial on their own at the Cunningham School before school on a voluntary basis. And so what was the line that you told me, the unnamed child remain unnamed? What did he say to you about math?
Oh, well, there've been great conversations, but this year, we, I had a student finally say that I really enjoy it. I'm wide awake and I'm wide awake because my teacher warms me up every single morning. And the teacher, I definitely delivered that information to her, but it was, to her, it was just part of her day and her planning and, you know, how she was going to make sure the students understood the concept. But to him, it was, my teacher really cares about me. She's giving me these five minutes so I can warm up before I get into my math lesson. And this particular student is doing fabulous and the gains he's made in just a few weeks are phenomenal.
That's great stuff.
So, yes.
I was just gonna ask a couple of questions first. So could you name the teachers who were on this committee with you?
I could. We have, we have about two or three from each grade level.
Okay.
So it is a lengthy list. I'd be happy to provide it.
Nope, that's great.
But we do have representatives from every grade level from every elementary school.
That's wonderful. And I think that this consistency among the elementary schools is so important. Excuse me. And you mentioned that you could walk from one classroom to the other. So is there a pacing guide for the teachers to follow in terms of what lessons are to be taught when? Mr. Phelan just addressed it, saying that they are going to be.
So the scope and sequence breaks down the curriculum according to month. And that has been a great guide, but these assessments actually focus it even more. It provides a little bit of an uncomfortable sense of urgency that teachers didn't have before. And the fact is, we have to cover a certain amount of material in a certain amount of time. We don't have the luxury of telling the state that we didn't cover that in May. We didn't get to that yet. So these assessments actually force teachers to pay more attention to that scope and sequence. It is not a day-by-day or week-by-week. It's currently a month-by-month. But next year, you will see these assessments. You will see the weeks window on there. So they'll have to know, by this time, I need to be ready to give this assessment. I understand that needs of different classes may require more or less days for particular units. And a day or two is fine, even a couple of days, but a couple of weeks is not fine. And if we are holding all students to the same high expectations, they need to be exposed to a certain part of the curriculum at a certain time of the year.
So are you thinking that you might move towards a pacing guide or is the scope and sequence sufficient?
Again, I do think there may be a need to be a little more proactive in the timing. I'm not saying that I would like to see a day-to-day pacing guide. But again, just saying, you know, by this week, you need to give this assessment and letting teachers know that they need to have covered this amount of material by this window.
Right. And I have another question. So the vertical articulation of this, is every grade in the school, in the elementary school, for example, working on the same strand at the same time? Is that, does the scope and sequence align that way too?
It tends to work that way in some grades, but not all. So I don't want to commit to saying that that's happening, but they are pretty close.
Because sometimes that opens up for rich conversation school-wide or in families. If they know that everyone in their family is working on measurement this month and you can, you know, that can be your conversation for the month.
I can't say that that is 100% true right now, but it does naturally happen. It is a spiraling curriculum that I think they do have, did have that in mind. We have, it's interesting to walk to the different grade levels and see how they are building on certain concepts, but that might not always be true, so I don't want to say.
Right. Just wondering. I think the predictive piece of it's wonderful.
I had two questions. One is, in terms of the whole timing and making sure that everyone's hitting those benchmark time from a timeline perspective, who, whose responsibility is that in the system? Is that, does that information go to you? Does it go to principals? Who monitors that whole?
I work very closely with every principal. I feel like none of this work would happen without their support and all of them are very familiar with this project. I keep them, you know, as soon as we finish our meetings, the first people I contact are the principals. We also have grade level representatives from each grade level that learn about these in our grade level meetings. So this work is coming from grade level representatives that work on our math team. Then it's discussed on our grade level representatives in a separate meeting. So the lines of communication, there are quite a few to get this work across. But in the ends, I know that by Friday of this week, every grade, one through five, has finished the first common assessment. And I know that because they are, these teachers are very conscientious. I already have quite a few pieces of data waiting for me to look at. In addition to, you know, the numerical data, what we'll be asking teachers to do is discuss specifically the open response question, the strengths and weaknesses of our students in their grade level meetings. And at our next grade level representative meeting after school at the Pierce Middle School, we'll talk about how our students are doing when asked to write in math and when asked to solve multi-step problems. So that actually will be a huge part of our meeting.
And then one other question is, you had mentioned that everyday math doesn't really provide you the breadth of assessments, et cetera, that are necessary to keep everything. Is the sense that some entity out there, some company, is developing those to make it easier? I mean, it sounds like there's great benefit from the processes you're going through, but it's also opportunity lost to be moving something else forward.
It's ironic, Mary. I have been forwarding Holly some of the emails. There's a listserv of assistant superintendents in the South Shore that one of the questions was, how is everybody doing with everyday math and what are you using to supplement it? The majority of the districts are using everyday math and the majority of your districts are looking at how they can supplement it with things like Study Island, which we are doing with different materials that are more based on the standards of that grade that may not be what I would call cook-through, that we might want to give a little more of and more rote work of. So it's a question that a lot of the districts are asking, but there, right now, nobody has found any one quote, "program" that satisfies all that. And that's why districts don't really, or should not really, focus on the program. It should focus on the standards. And you hope you get a program that addresses as many as possible, but the standards is what you would move your instruction through. And the program would help you do that, knowing that you'd have to supplement it at certain points in time.
I just want to say, everyday math actually has, they have quite a few assessments. They, and the end-of-unit assessments tended to be too time-consuming, very long. So this was an attempt. And parts of those assessments will still be used. Teachers will be assessing throughout the unit, not just at the end of the unit. This is just, you know, one particular test.
Mr. Badlajak?
It's been a while since I've had kids in the elementary school, but my recollection from the time certainly was that most parents were real comfortable with the question on the left-hand side of the board. Had seen at some point in their lives, questions in the middle and probably on TV are very happy that they can say, well, that's a small font on the right-hand side, so I really can't read that right now. So they don't have to try to explain to anyone what the answer might be. It used to be certainly that when the PTOs put on math nights, they were the best-attended nights of the year. And I'm wondering if that's still somewhat the case.
I think very much so.
There's quite a leap here from children to parents on a lot of this curriculum.
And I don't think it's just an everyday math issue. I think that this is. Exactly. And students are asked to do a lot more than I was asked in elementary school. And they can do it and they're able to do it. You know, a plug for Study Island, if a parent is struggling with working on any, any content in any part of the math, if they're in grades three through eight, if a parent can log on to Study Island as a student, they can click a lesson and it's a cheat sheet for every parent out there. You know, I have a middle school nephew and we used it to look at ratios and proportions. You know, I have a middle school nephew, and we used it to look at ratios and proportions. And when parents have been removed from that for years, or types of angles, types of lines, these are all things that parents may not be fluent in right now because they haven't touched it in so long. But the Study Island piece, if you click on that lesson, everything you need is right there. It's a textbook at the keyboard. So, you know, keep in mind that that is a way to support parents. I realize this is uncomfortable for parents, and parents feel threatened. And oftentimes, I hear that they don't like that new math because they're not comfortable with it. And there is a way to become more comfortable with it. And I'm working with a few of the principals right now to provide support for parents so that they can learn not only how to support their children, but to use tools like Study Island to make it easier for them. Because homework shouldn't be a stressful part of the day. And parents often feel that stress because they don't feel competent to help their children. And we have ways to help parents.
Well, and parent stress is directly translated to the children. Parents are stressed out looking at this. The children are not comfortable either.
The good news is the Milton children can do this. They're doing well. We're well above the state, and they can do it. So next steps, well, actually, how often do we assess? I went backwards. Sorry about that. So next steps for us would be to continue to analyze the data in grade-level meetings, develop a common structure to analyze data on the school level. So we're doing this with the grade-level reps and with the people who work on the math committee, but really to develop a common culture in the school that this is always happening. And also to revise the scope and sequence to delineate the new Common Core standards and include the assessment unit windows that we talked about. And to continue this math assessment team, I am so thankful for that opportunity to not only get to know these teachers better, but the practices they're using and finding a way to communicate that throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Perhaps when this goes online, we could add in the names of the teachers of the different grade levels to the presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive carefully.
Sure, I think so. Next, we have our first-grade and kindergarten information evenings coming up. I'll remind the public about those, and those dates are on our website. But we had spoken to the school committee that we have a process in the Milton Public Schools, a policy, when students enter first grade, how children enter into the English or the French immersion program. And over the years, we respond to the number of students, the families who select English and select French immersion. And working with the principals, I said, when you have a school system, you heard these educators here tonight, the dynamics, the demands, the school system is always in movement. So we have an edit tonight to our first-grade assignment process. We have really two revisions, two edits, to share with the public tonight. Ms. Kelly, afterward this, we're going to discuss whether these are revisions to policy that we have to vote. But I want to say that, one, John Phelan chaired last year, and Kristen Bagley-Jones sat on the World Language Committee of Parents, Teachers, and Educators. And twice, Mr. Phelan and I have brought together that group this year and worked through this revision. I've worked with the principals, and we have worked on this presentation. I would welcome the school committee's input. Again, you're seeing it, you got it in your packets only yesterday, but in the coming week, if you could review it, your comments tonight, because a week from tomorrow, we'll be rolling out this presentation about first grade to the incoming parents of our first graders. And so we're going to share with you two revisions tonight that we're going to be making to our student assignment plan for entering first graders. Mr. Phelan's going to present the first revision, the attendance area revision only for new K through 5 students, and then I'll do the presentation on the lottery, the adjustment we're making to the lottery process.
Thank you, Mary. The recommendation that we're about to speak of was actually also part of the World Language Committee meeting last year. And I believe we addressed it at a school committee meeting, but we really never followed through and made it part of the policy. Just as a review, again, this is for new students, kindergarten through grade 5, so this does not impact any student who's currently a kindergarten through 5 student. This is for new students moving into the district or coming in as kindergarten this next year. Back in 2007, the school committee voted to change the lines of the assignment process in the districts, the district lines and the enrollment areas that we have in the town. Part of that change for the Cunningham Collicott was that we created a Cunningham Collicott area that people who lived in those targeted streets were communicated to and understood that they would be able to go to either school, that we would assign them to either school based on the class size that we had. We did not give them a clear, you're a Cunningham person or a Collicott person. The reason for that was to allow some flexibility by the administration to keep students in classes that had the lowest possible class size as they were moving into the district. That piece of the student assignment process was very successful. The Cunningham Collicott folks that are in that district, in that portion of the district, are very clear about that's their situation, and it has enabled them to be able to be assigned to either school without very much of a concern. Yes, Ms. Kelly?
If I can just ask, just because my memory is foggy. So if I live in that district and my first student who's coming through the ranks is assigned to Collicott, does that mean that I am now a Collicott family?
That is correct.
Unless I choose a French immersion class that is oversubscribed, and then...
In general, the answer is yes. You're a Collicott family from then on. And just to be more specific, there's the Cunningham area, and there's a Collicott District area. And then there's just this little pie neighborhood of, say, 15 streets that goes over both areas. So it's not the all of both areas. It's just one segment that overlap. And they would be members of that school, whichever one was chosen for them, for the remainder of all their children's careers at the elementary level.
But with the exception of the next part that you're going to talk about.
Yeah. I think when you get into what you choose for program is totally separate from where you get assigned for kindergarten or as a new student.
And what parents have said to me in the Collicott, mixed, Collicott-Cunningham mixed area is, I feel comfortable because on my street, there are children that go to Collicott and there are children that go to Cunningham. So they have really grown to be, this is, I'm comfortable with this because my children on my street go to both schools. So it's really worked, and I say over and over again that every time we ask a parent or talk to a parent about assignment, and we talk about class size, a Milton Public School parent has never said to me, I'm not going to that school because of class size. They will always choose the lower class size. They understand, they're smart, they're intelligent. They understand the value of low class size.
With that model working and with now being 2011 and having three or four years of a pattern of how we enroll students, we realized that the effort to change the district line between the Glover and the Tucker resulted in the Glover being oversubscribed and the Tucker being actually undersubscribed. So while every August came and we were putting students at either school, we were actually asking students who lived in a certain area, we might need to have you go to the Tucker because we have plenty of room there, and we may be oversubscribed at the Glover. So we have been informally using a certain neighborhood to place students at either Glover or Tucker. What we're presenting tonight is actually to just formalize that process by modeling it after our Cunningham Collicott mixed area and to now make a Glover-Tucker mixed area. So what I'm going to present to you would be the streets that would be included, and then I'll show you a map view so the public can get a good sense of what it would look like from two perspectives. The streets involved, as you can see on the board, run from Blue Hills Parkway, which the Tucker School is actually on, and all the streets between Blue Hills Parkway and Thatcher Street, including Laurel West, Kayla Dyer, Houston Warren, Audubon, Weston, Ma Ave, Harold River, Gibbons Grove, Winthrop, Parkway Crescent, Catherine Road, Phelan Ave, and Chilton Park. To give parents a better perspective in a map view, on the right-hand side, you have, this is Thatcher Street. This is actually the food mart. This is the Pierce Middle School. And here we have Blue Hills Parkway with Tucker School located right on the Parkway. So technically, this was always a Tucker zone. Then it got moved over to Glover. And we would have students who lived right here that could look out their door and see Tucker, but they would have to go all the way over to Glover. So essentially, what we're doing now, instead of moving it all back, we're giving the flexibility to the district to be able to say to parents, you live in this area, and you are now, could be considered a Glover parent or family, or a Tucker parent or family, depending on class size, when we enroll you into the district.
I think the school committee asked for this map last week.
Correct. And I really would like to emphasize, this is for new students to the district. So if you are already a Tucker child, this does not pertain to you. If you're already a Glover family that lives in this district, this does not pertain to you. And once you are assigned to a school, as stated by member Kelly, that is the school you would be in, or your family would be a Glover School child or a Tucker School child. In this area right now, similar to the Cunningham Collicott mixed area, there are families that go to both Glover and Tucker in these streets as we speak right now through the informal process of assigning our students. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
So Thatcher Street, it looks like one side of Thatcher Street is now in that zone, but I don't think it's listed.
Thatcher is not included. It's actually the streets in between Thatcher. Thatcher's the boundary street.
So you're on Thatcher, where are your...
If you're on Thatcher, you're Glover.
Okay.
Half of...
So Houston, then it seems to me some of these streets need to name the numbers.
Right.
Because Houston goes all the way across, it crosses Thatcher Street.
Correct. So just for clarification, we did not give that, we did not actually put down the actual addresses for the purposes of this exercise. I think the map speaks to it. If Houston does run across Thatcher, then the end of Houston that goes over Thatcher Street towards Kelly Field would still be considered Glover. So everybody on Thatcher Street and going towards the Kelly Field side, if any of those streets run across, like Houston, I believe that might be the one Warren might go across, those are the only streets. It is by address, but that is the physical boundary. And the Parkway is considered the mixed area on this, on the opposite of Tucker School. That side of the Parkway is a mixed area. If you live on the Parkway on the Tucker side, you have always been and will continue to be just in the Tucker District area.
And so to Mr. Phelan's point and to Ms. Kelly's point, when you go to the website, that's how parents find out what school district they're in. And we do reinforce this with the actual numbers. So we don't say to somebody, you're on one side of Thatcher, you're on the other side of Thatcher. We actually, the way we do it, we go out and drive, and we put the actual numbers of the homes down on which are in each district. You get a street like Brook Road, Canton Avenue, some of those have three different, they're assigned to three different districts.
And that's why I brought it up, is I think in the policy that exists on the website...
There's numbers.
There's numbers. And I think we need to just get to that level of detail.
The numbers on tomorrow. I sort of giggled when you asked that because when we did the student assignment plan, Sean Walsh and I went out in the car and went up to houses to find out the numbers. So we know what's right. So we'll take care of that.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Quick question. Can we add on this presentation, the streets? That's the mixed area for the Collicott-Cunningham. You have a page on the Glover. It would be helpful for folks to see what the Collicott-Cunningham mixed area is as well.
Are you saying for presentation purposes? Because the policy... Right. The policy should be updated, I think. Well, I guess, I don't know whether we want to discuss. Right now, it's listed as a policy on our website. It actually details the street listing, and that is considered a policy. So this is to be updated accordingly, the same way that we have, I think, I don't know, the separate page section around that combo area for Cunningham Collicott. This would be described the same way and delineated the same way.
Right. I just wanted for the presentation.
So for the grade one night next week, you would like a similar type of map that would delineate Cunningham Collicott?
And we'll put the website up. When we make the reference to the Collicott-Cunningham site, mixed area, you're right, we can put that up. So to Ms. Kelly's point, Ms. Sheridan, are we asking for a vote on this?
Right. So we need some discussion around that. As Mrs. Kelly has said, this is currently a policy. What would be the wish of the committee?
If it's a policy, doesn't it have to go through a policy subcommittee and compare for two readings to be officially vetted? I mean, we want to implement this. We have been implementing it, in fact. But we want to make it formal. The Glover-Tucker district has never formally been set as a mixed district. We haven't informally been doing that.
Sorry, got it.
So the question is just, certainly going through the policy committee and doing two readings is the right procedural way to do it. The question is, does that afford us still the opportunity to do it this spring, as we intend to do it anyway?
Right. I think that we can vote in principle on what is being proposed by the administration in terms of the change to the policy, but that the process should go through the formal policy subcommittee and go through, just to get it finalized. And quite frankly, if we could then take the policy and roll it into our present policies in the same format, et cetera, I think that would make a lot of sense and tighten the pain.
We did bring it to the policy subcommittee, and then it was moved here. So we'll move it back to policy subcommittee now.
But we're making... Tonight, we can authorize the superintendent, assistant superintendent, I'll move it if that makes it easier, authorizes superintendent, assistant superintendent to incorporate this notion of a Glover-Tucker mixed district in their presentations for kindergarten, first-grade information nights, pending action by the policy subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Just to clarify, Ms. Bagley-Jones, so this actually is, the Cunningham Collicott one has been in existence since 2007.
Well, I know. And we had talked about this at policy committee. That's why I was confused. We had already talked about this new part.
Right.
And then we pushed it back to committee.
That's right.
Not a policy, but not as a policy.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Now we'll go on to the, for the first-grade information night, again, reminding the public next Thursday night at the individual schools, the elementary student assignment plan, grade-one student assignment process. We're going to be talking about the lottery system. The grade, if you indulge me reading to you, hello is the fixed number of English and French immersion classes in each school that is consistent year to year. An issue arose last year when we were going through this process that we had more kindergarten at the Cunningham than we had first grades. So it was set up for the students and the families not to work. And so these schools were constructed as four-unit or three-unit schools, which means at every grade level, there are four units, or at every grade level, there are three units. To that point, the Collicott is a four-unit school, four units at K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Cunningham is a three-unit school. Glover is a four-unit school, and Tucker is a three-unit school. And we spent a tremendous amount of time, we're working with the principals and the sped director, where our special education classes are placed and making sure these schools were built with art and music rooms, that the schools are being utilized and maximizing the space. So a fixed number of kindergarten and grade-one classes allows for the maximum number of students to attend grade-one in their home school. So, you know, we recognized last year some of the problems that we had, and having to move families was around that very point. Grade-one information night around student assignment, grade-one class size limits are fixed for each program. We have class size limits when we give you the enrollment sheet. And English at grade-one, 22 students, and at the French immersion, the class size maximum, 26 students. And again, we all understand, I talked about class size, the importance of class size, and working with this over the years, again, one could say, what's the discrepancy between the English and the French immersion program? But for those just joining us or not involved in the process, when you begin the French immersion program and you go over five years, children are retained, families move, we work very hard. There's a small number of children who leave the program, but there's attrition. And then when new families join, move into Milton and join the Milton Public Schools after grade-one, they can't enter into the French immersion. And so that really drives the maximums that we make for the two programs. We want to make this very clear. We want to be transparent. And we say we want to be, explain to parents, over the past years, there have been class-sized educational assistance... assistance, there will be no class-sized educational assistance. We want families to understand, when they come for, this is a, this is a very involved first grade presentation. We highlight the English program, we highlight the French immersion program, we highlight the after-school programs. We want to put all the information out in front of parents so that they can make informed choices for their children. No class-sized educational assistance. This year, we have had reading teachers. And those reading teachers are on the list of possible reductions. I can say on behalf of the administrative team that I'm looking optimistically when funds are identified by the Warren Committee and Town Meeting and the town. And at the elementary level, this is the priority. Again, we meet with the school committee, but these reading teachers really have, John, you said 140 children?
Correct.
Of dealing with first and second grade students, identifying issues and working with them. And so, but right now, the reading teachers are on the reduction list. We want families to understand this, and we're being completely transparent. Because some parents will go into the 26 and think that they're a class-sized assistance. I get those calls. I know those people think that. So we want them to understand. Again, I'm going to read to you the criteria for oversubscription of French immersion. If more parents or guardians choose the French immersion than the number of seats available in a particular school, the district will assign the students based on the elementary student assignment plan. Priority will be given to students with siblings to remain in their home school, but not necessarily in the program of their choice. Now this is where the change arises. Key note, siblings will no longer be automatically grandfathered into the French immersion program, but will be given priority into the English program in their home school if they are not selected for French in the lottery. Let me give you an example. We have a school, and we have an oversubscription. We're going to put all the children who are in kindergarten in that school into a lottery. And fill, again, from the prior slide, to the number 26, if there's one French immersion class, a two-French immersion classes. Last year, what we did, it was a tiered lottery. First lottery was children who had older siblings in the French immersion. The second tier, children who were in kindergarten in the Milton Public Schools, but didn't have any older siblings. And the third tier, children who were new to the district, who had just moved here or in their private kindergarten. I have to tell you that we've had a lot of discussion with a lot of groups, and this was an issue. And I feel, I feel very strongly about this, that we worked to make the process equitable and fair to everyone. And again, we're now putting the first two tiers together. If you were in kindergarten, you're going to be in the lottery. Because, because you have an older sibling in the school, we can, again, we hesitate to use the word guarantee, but I'll make every effort that you're going to be in the same school. My goal is to have families stay in the same school. But we're not going to guarantee you French immersion. You might be in the English program. We're going to guarantee you that you'll be, next to guarantee, if there are any guarantees in life, you'll be in the same school. But all the children who are in kindergarten are going to be in the same lottery, if in fact, we have to have a lottery in a particular school. And students not selected for the French immersion in their home school will be given the choice of English in their home school, or an open seat in another school's French immersion program, or if necessary, creating an auxiliary class. Let me explain this. So we, let's use the Sheridan family. And the child is, was not, name was not picked to be in the one French immersion class, hypothetically, let's say, the Cunningham School. We're going to, that child would, family would be given the option of the English program at the Cunningham School, and families are going to have to, we're going to stay in communication. Nobody could say last year, we didn't communicate effectively with families. We then have to look at what the enrollment is across town. Because we might have open seats at the Glover, Collycott, or Tucker. So before we go into discussing an auxiliary class, which I'll further explain, we have to look and see if we have seats at the other three schools. And we have to see what our numbers are at all the schools, and decide, and communicate with all of the families and bring them together, how we're going to fill all the seats across town before we create an auxiliary class. And then the next, the auxiliary, I think we should add, John, the auxiliary class, what the auxiliary class is for the viewing public...
This is the next slide.
Oh, all right. We're going to get to that. A lottery system will be implemented to determine which students will fill the available seats in the oversubscribed school. All current Milton Public Schools students who select French immersion will have their name entered into the school-based lottery. And students new to the district for grade one will be placed after the students who are currently in the Milton Public Schools. I.e., new students with siblings will be given priority for home school, but again, not the program. Now, for those just becoming involved in this program or joining first grade, the auxiliary class, each year, the superintendent of schools will determine which school houses the auxiliary class if needed, a French or an English class. This is determined by budget, enrollment, space, and overall needs of the district. So what happened last year, we had an oversubscription to French immersion. Again, keeping in mind that prior slide, two classes at the Collycott, one at the Cunningham, two at the Glover, one at the Tucker. We create, we filled all of those classes to 26, and then we created an auxiliary class where there was space. And that space was at the Tucker School. So we created an auxiliary French immersion class, and we offered families to enroll their children in that class. Again, there are two classes at the Tucker, the children are completely integrated. That's a really good question. Parents asked, are the children going to stay in that class all the way through? No. The 26, the 52 children are mixed between the two classes. And those children's siblings, those families have the opportunity to stay at the Tucker School, to follow the older sibling. Now, we looked at, we looked at next year, looking at, rolling up the school district, deciding where our special needs classrooms will be placed. And if necessary, next year, we have room at the Cunningham for an auxiliary class. Again, you have to look at the number of fifth grades leaving a district. Again, we spent a tremendous amount of time projecting each school ahead to next year. And when a student is assigned to the auxiliary class of school, the student remains at that school for the duration of his or her elementary career. This is very, very important. So those children who went to Tucker last year for French immersion will stay there for their elementary career. And parents or guardians of students who select the auxiliary class will have the option to have their subsequent children enter the assignment process in the same school as their older sibling, or they might want the next child to go back to the home school that, in the geographical area that they live. Grade one information night, following along, next steps. Grade one classroom visit schedule and program choice form will be sent home to all kindergarten parents or guardians on Thursday, February 10. So we're having this information night, next Thursday night, at the respective schools. Again, there's a presentation, that all the principals will give the same presentation, and this, the, this, these slides, this PowerPoint will be part of the presentation. On Thursday, February 10, all the information will be sent home to all of the parents. Grade one classroom visits will be held the week of February 14, date and time determined by each school. Again, over the years, we've developed this tradition that families can go in and observe in the English and the French immersion classes. The principals will send out designated times. They'll make appropriate groups, and their, the visits are led by the principals. Program choice forms are due to the school offices by Wednesday, March 2. Again, this system worked perfectly. Last year, families returned their first grade choice forms to the secretaries in their respective schools. Parents and guardians will be notified if their child has been assigned to the school or program, or if their child's name will be entered into a lottery system by Friday, March 11. So we're asking for that kind of time to look, excuse me?
How will they be notified?
They'll be notified via email. That's how they were notified last year.
We'll email them, and we'll double back with US mail.
With paper. Correct.
Moving on. If necessary, any school-based lottery will be held the week of March 14. And again, we have to look at what, we've gone over 100 different possibilities with the principals, and what we have to do, and we fully vent this, and we communicate it to everyone. We have to look at what the numbers are at each school, what the enrollment numbers are in each school, to then make our decision. All of these, all of this, again, process that we're going through, we might not have to have any lotteries this year. Again, but we have to have these procedures in place, and they have to be outlined clearly to parents. Parents and guardians whose child is not selected in the lottery will be notified of their options. Again, you understand, their options are, perhaps there are seats in one, two, or three of the other elementary schools, or do they want to go into the English program, or will there be an auxiliary class? That's when we can make that determination. Parents and guardians must make their decision as to which option they are selecting by Friday, March 25. All students new to the district in grade one will be assigned to the remaining available seats after March 25. We're going to go through this whole process, and then assign children who have just moved in, or who might be in private kindergartens. Teacher assignments will be made by the school principal and will be sent to parents and guardians in our... So we feel that outlining this process to parents, and so one watching this might say, what's the change? I referred to the change in the beginning. We had a three-tiered lottery last year, and this year, we're going to have two tiers. All of the children who have been in kindergarten will be in the lottery. And again, for people who have more, older siblings, what we'll do is, as to the best of our ability, and probably my primary goal would be to enroll those children, if they want, in the English program, so that all their children can be in one school. Some questions that have come up. Are students who are currently enrolled in the Milton Public Schools affected by the new Glover-Tucker mixed area? No. Current students will not have their placements affected. This change only pertains to students new to the district. This pertains, this is in reference to the change that John Phelan outlined. How many students attended their home school for grade one in 2010, 2011? Approximately 94% of students attended their home school for grades one in either French or English for grade one last year. So last year, we had a lot of issues, but 94% of the students attend, were able to attend their home school. May I, can I return to my home school after being placed in auxiliary class? When a student is assigned to the auxiliary class of school, the student remains at that school for the duration of his or her elementary career. Let me explain to you what that's about. Let's say I'm in, I, my parent chose the Tucker auxiliary class. Well, and then a seat became available in second and third or fourth grade to go back to the Collycott School. That's really too disruptive to the system. That's disruptive to the receiving class, the sending class. And so parents are asked to, and they understood, that their children will remain in the auxiliary class their entire elementary career. What happens if I choose French, but I am not selected to attend it at my home school? Your child will be offered a seat in the French immersion program at the auxiliary class, and that's going to be at the Cunningham School this year. You can select this option, or you may select the English program and follow the student assignment plan. I think that this, we should...
There's a caveat there about the open seat.
Yes, we have to add that.
If you don't have the open seats in there.
Yeah, we have to add that. That's good, Mr. Pavlichak. We have to add that, to that answer. I choose French. My child goes to auxiliary class. Do my other children get grandfathered into the same school? Parents or guardians of students who select the auxiliary class will have the option to have their subsequent children enter into the assignment process in the same school as their older sibling, or at their original home school per the street school listing. And if my child attends a school that is not our neighborhood school, do we receive transportation? Your child will receive transportation based on the district's transportation policy. And how will the students who select the auxiliary class be assigned to a classroom? The students who select the auxiliary class will be heterogeneously assigned. I think we might be able to better detail that, that, and give an example that if there are two classes or three classes, the children will be integrated each year and next. There's not a solitary auxiliary class for five years at the Tucker that runs with children from outside the district.
Correct.
So thank you for that presentation, Ms. Grumley. Several people were asking to ask questions, and I, and I wanted to allow you just to run through the whole presentation.
Because perhaps I'd ask them their questions later in the presentation.
That's what I was holding out for, but Mr. Cohane got my attention right at the beginning, so would you still have a question?
I just wanted to be absolutely clear, Mary, that if your child is in English, and the sibling, is this the only guarantee, that the sibling is guaranteed to get into the same school in English? That's the only guarantee here?
If, in fact, there's an oversubscription in French, and we go to the lottery, and that child's name is not selected to fill those 26 times one in the Tucker and...
No, I'm actually going to get to that in a second, but I'm saying if your child is in English right now, and the sibling is coming up, they're going to get into the same school in English, right?
In our experience, again, no guarantee, our experience has been that, and we're, we have been able to facilitate that with the number of classes, and our history provides for that.
But if your child is in the French immersion and the sibling coming up, then they have to go into a lottery?
If we have an oversubscription...
If they want the French immersion.
If, if we have, if, when all the parents make their choices, to Mr. Cohane's point, and it's a good clarifying one, let's say, coming up at the Glover, we have four, four kindergartens, they're going into four first grades. Perhaps, and that the choices will be made by parents, that we have two English classes under 22, and two French immersion at 26, we won't need a lottery. And all of the parents will get, to have their children enrolled in the school program they want at their home school.
Okay. Good. Just follow that, for purpose of clarification, how many lotteries did we have last year out of the four schools?
Two.
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 Good point to make that we don't have a lottery in every school every year.
Right. And it'll even, we feel we'll be positioned even better to have less lotteries, because we have strategically placed all the kindergartens at the same amount of classes going into first grade. So seat for seat, we have the appropriate amount of space rolling up from kindergarten to first grade.
And last year, we were able to meet all of the needs of the Cunningham parents as choices were made and parents changed their minds.
Mrs. Kelly?
So I guess I would go back to one of the first slides where we say French immersion class size maximum will be 26 students. I still think that we haven't investigated, from an educational perspective, the result of having those class sizes, and I think it's incumbent upon this group and the administration to do so. And I don't know what the plan for that is, but I think we have to.
But so for, to that point, if I might?
Yep.
Ms. Kelly had asked me this, and I'll make a presentation at next Wednesday's school committee, how we're going to look and analyze the impact of those 26s at one and two.
Right. But here's the, at least the problem, as I see it, in that we've established, I'm sorry?
The impact with parents making their choices, their decision.
Well, it has impact, but also, in the past several years, we've had some supplement, right? We've had, this year, we have the reading teachers. Last year, we had half-time aides, the year before, we had full-time aides. And so the assessment of this, given stark budgetary conditions, you know, we can't really predict. We might be able to get a trend, but we can't definitely predict. So I have a strong objection to us still continuing to have a class size that we set a maximum limit of 26 at a first grade level. I understand why we're doing it. It's to get to equity, you know, throughout the grade and ultimately to grade five. But again, I don't think from an, from an educational perspective, that's the best way to approach this. So I guess I just want to put that, myself on record for that, and hope that we continue to create a process where we glean that data and really make adjustments as needed based on the educational information, rather than our desire to, to have equity.
And to, and if I might, Ms. Kelly, years, perhaps six years ago, it was established that all the first grades would be, what was, what were they capped at? Do you remember?
We had 22, one budgetary cycle, so we were able to get 22.
And so, and so to that point, and again, without these policies in place, when the numbers go down in French immersion, in... um, when the numbers go down in French immersion in grades two, three, four, and five. And then when new students enter, I'm just reiterating, I know you understand it, but uh, for the viewing public to understand it, when new children come into the Milton Public Schools, they can only go into the English program. And so, we have a fifth grade at the Tucker and the number is very low. And so, um, again, uh, with the twenty-sixes and this committee has lobbied um, like parents would, again, for reading teachers or part-time aides, um, or when we were able to have full-time aides, when those class sizes allege. And my priority, um, again, um, is uh, first and second grade and uh, twenty-six is very high.
Um, and then the other question I have is around the, wh, why there are two tiers in this lottery? Why aren't we treating all first grade parents the same?
Well, see, and so you're at the very point, when, it's not really treating parents the same. What I feel is that all these kindergarteners have been in this school, have been in the school. All the kindergarteners in the first tier, they've gone a full year, they've been part of the school, they've gotten off the bus, they've gotten on the bus, they're familiar with the school. So that children who have never stepped foot in the school, so I don't feel I'm doing this to parents. I'm thinking about children and having been an elementary school principal. And I just think that if a child never stepped foot in the school, that it would be a lot easier for that child to go to um, one of our four outstanding schools where there's equity among them.
And here's where I would argue back, you know, I think part of our structure around our elementary assignment system has created lack of neighborhoods. Um, you know, the fact that we have some neighborhoods, streets that are, go, can go to either school, that creates some, you know. But when you have uh, one family here, based on when their first child came into the Milton Public Schools that goes to Tucker and one that goes to Colicott and one that goes to Cunningham because of these types of things, we're not creating neighborhoods. We're not supporting neighborhoods. And I would suggest to you that if I'm a new student to the Milton Public School, what I wanna see when I get off that bus for that first day in the Milton Public School is my neighbor down the street. Because that gives me a comfort level, rather than traveling on a bus to a whole group of kids that I may never have been exposed to. Now granted, you know, um, it, it, do we want everyone to be getting along and knowing everybody, yes. But, but if we're really talking about, you know, the experience of those children. And those children, once they walk through our doors, are our children too, regardless of whether they were there for kindergarten, first grade, or any other grade. I would suggest to you that separating them into a separate family is not, is detrimental to sort of what I believe should be um, our, our approach to this.
Uh, just in response, I think that through the assignment process of kindergarten and first grade students, we, I think we do maintain that pretty well. We have a ninety-six percent number that we use that um, of families that are in their home school in the program that they wanted. The problem becomes when students come in new to the district at other grades, either over the summer or during the school year. And then we have to place them in what we consider to be the best class size. Or there is a definitely a variable of control over if a school's already full or at capacity at a grade, that we do have to actually put them in. So that, that is where most of the uh, neighborhoods uh, of children who might go to different schools has actually come about. We are starting to grant, uh, to mature out of the old uh, or former districting plan and into the new. My street was one of them, I live on Glover Street, it used to be uh, Glover Street, now it's uh, Cunningham Street. So all the older kids are Glover students or really, they're all passing high school students and all the younger families have them. So that's now maturing through, so that, those neighborhoods are now being established around the district areas that were drawn up about four years ago. The areas, the, some of the neighborhoods that may have students from uh, different schools usually revolve around families that moved in with a third grader or a first grader or a fifth grader and have been placed accordingly to the best class size uh, or to the capacity that the school was able to hold them.
Right, and, and I think, you know, that's inherent on a, any school system that really adjusts the class size. However, I guess what I'm suggesting is, if I'm a family who presently has a kindergartner at a private school and I know the timeline for signing up for first grade, I quite frankly, don't think it's fair that we separate those kids. If it's past when we've gone through our process and assignment, et cetera, you basically are then at the, uh, uh, you're in the process and you have to deal with wherever you are. But I guess what I'm, I'm suggesting to you is that for this particular timeline, I w, I think it would be beneficial to the system for all those who are participating along this timeline, that they sort of be treated the same.
And to Mrs. Kelly's point, I'm, I'm willing to hear that and talk about it because, again, you understand the change that we uh, made from last year. And a lot of people in this, have said to me, don't make the change, keep it the way it was, um, you know. And I said, but if I know it's not right, then I'm not going to stand up and um, lead the school district and do it. So to your point, I'd be very interested in what the school committee thought.
And then one other point, I think, one of these points that says that-
Ms. Kelly, one second, I think, Ms. Paglii Jones, do you wanna speak to that?
I just, 'cause I wanted to speak to that.
Oh, sure.
And I do agree with your concern about the kindergarten kids and um, I think one of the ways that we talked about this on the World Language Committee is to really make a commitment to publicize that. Now that we have full-day kindergarten, if I, I'm a working mom, my kids went to private kindergarten because I was a working mom and I needed the after-school care. They did get into the program that I wanted them to, but that was luck of the draw, but anyway. If I know, moving into town and I have a preschooler, that if I send my kid to private kindergarten, I lessen my chances of getting into my home school. Now that we have full-day kindergarten, parents have a choice if they need their kids to be in full-day kindergarten with us. Some parents, when we did this, didn't know that and I felt very badly for those parents because they had no idea. So I just think it would behoove us to really publicize so that when parents make their decision about private kindergarten, half-day kindergarten with us, or full-day kindergarten with us, that they understand that this might be a consequence. Not saying it makes it okay.
This was, this was part of the policy last year.
Right, I'm just saying, we need to really push that so we're fair to those parents so they can make a decision.
So Kristen, you, you just said that that was discussed at the World Language Committee, was that, would you say that was the consensus of the World Language Committee?
That it was very hard for parents who were kindergarten parents to not know this, that there was a lot of feelings, right, John, about?
Yeah, we, we talked about-
I'd known this, and before, we didn't have a full-day K, but now we do.
We, we will have that be part of the full-day K uh, presentation that we do. Because we do get families that come to the full-day K presentation that are either choosing to come with us for full day, come with us for half day, or choosing to stay at their uh, non-Milton Public School kindergarten. So that would be an ideal spot for us to make sure that they're very clear about, uh, that choice could result in some sort of a uh, cons, you know, what, they're entering, because technically, they're entering the district as a new student. That's technically what they're doing, they're, they're enrolling at a time where we don't know who they are yet, we can't anticipate who they are, we don't know. Uh, we're, we're working with the students that we have, who we have in kindergarten. We have uh, a very high percent of, percentage of our families now that we have full-day K in our system. So we're dealing with about, uh, I think last year, we, new, new to grade one, we probably had about fourteen to eighteen students. So that's kind of the, the number that we were talking about. Some of whom were around and made that conscious decision to go to K-private and some of whom moved in and just happened to be, you know, uh, coming in who may have not have been available at that time of the presentation. But we'll make that transparent and very clear, that, that, that's part of the, the process for grade one, uh, just as, just as information for them to have.
So Ms. Gormly, just to follow up on that point, do you think that um, if the numbers are that low, if they are, say, a, approximately fourteen families or students entering the first grade, do you think that that would greatly impact um, your results here or, I mean, would you, would you be in favor of that?
I have to tell you, I, I have to think about it.
Right.
I would have to think about it and I'd wanna talk to the leadership team. I'm very interested what the school committee thinks about it. Um, we've put a tremendous amount of work into this. Um, we've listened to parents over the, over the years and um, I hear Mrs. Kelly's point. I'd like to look at the numbers to Ms. Sheridan's point, we have next Wednesday night to discuss it. Um, the presentation isn't till next Thursday. And to Mrs. Kelly's point, um, the, the parents that would have been impacted by this, they did speak up. And, and I have to tell you that, um, some people have said to me, uh, don't change it, just leave it. And, but I listen to parents. I've listened to parents and I listened to parents all year and I know that having one tier is the right thing to do. I know it's the right thing to do and um, uh, I, I, to Mrs. Kelly's point, we'll look at the data and uh, listen, uh, talk to the school committee about it and talk to the leadership team. And so, so if the community is confused, what this would do would put all of the children in um, the same tier. If we had an over-enrollment.
That are meeting this timeline.
That's a good point.
So, anyone, any parent out there who has made a choice for whatever reason, or a family who just moved to town, who has a kindergartner coming up, uh, or a first grader coming up, they would have, they would all be together in that, whatever that experience was, however it played out in that picture.
And, and to, and again, we have, um, we've put a lot of thought into this, um, and we want it to be fair and equitable. So I would ask to step away for, from it for the week, come back next Wednesday night to you and talk to the leadership team. And not make a decision tonight.
Can I just ask a question though?
Sure.
But a kindergarten, p, private school kindergarten kid will most likely ninety-nine point nine be percent, be guaranteed a seat in their home school, just not French. So, they will be guaranteed a seat.
So will every other child, that's what I'm saying, is we keep on separating kids.
No, but I get, I, the, the reason why I would have a concern with that, just to, not to disagree, but just to put a point of fact out there that, that, those eighteen students, because they haven't stepped foot in any of the schools yet, really can be placed in, in any of the schools for either English or French. Because not every student that comes in that would be new to the system for first grade would, they, they want, it varies between program. That, those thirteen or eighteen students could very well be the difference in one school for us to be able to say out loud that we can offer you, a kindergarten student, English in your home school or the program in your home school. Though, those eighteen kids could actually be the thing that bumps that, that, that um, that guarantee or that priority. So I, that could end up being a student who went to kindergarten at Cunningham and then uh, wanted to stay in English if he asked. He might not be able to go for that, because you're adding that population of students into the mix before you place all your existing students.
So, John, I know where John's coming from because John makes the assignments. And so what John sees is we really start a kindergarten now. We really start a kindergarten and with full day, we start a kindergarten all, you know, at a very high percentage. So what John's saying is, when John sees children even new at first grade, John sees them as, Mr. Cohen, um, uh, at your s, school where you live, um, the class size is capped, but I have a seat at X school and Y school. I'm going to ask you to go and meet the principal, tour the school, Mr. Cohen, and um, accept a seat at one of those two schools. If it's outside the two, um, the transportation, I'll provide the transportation, the Milton Public Schools. So, what John Fallon's saying is, those parents who are joining us in first grade, they're really new. John's saying that he's sort of treating them just like he would treat a fourth, am I putting words in your mouth?
No, that's correct, they're just new to the district, yeah.
A fourth grader or a second grader or a third grader, irregardless of the program.
Correct.
First, they're new to the pu, Milton Public Schools. We start with who's in kindergarten. They, you know, quite frankly, if a new student came now to um, five more, perhaps six of our kindergarten classes, I would say to that child, they're registering tomorrow, um, th, those class sizes are capped. And um, I have seats in two other schools where the class size of kindergarten is seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. But in two of my schools, my kindergartens are capped. And again, to a parent, um, they move where the class size is lower. And so to John Fallon's point, we're, you know, we're making, we're almost making exception for the new parents coming in at one because we're not treating like we treat all-
New students to the district.
Students to the district. E, every new student, I, John and I and Sean Walsh do, we, we place every new student.
I guess I would just argue again, so yes, I would agree with you if this is a family that has grade three, grade two, and grade one. But if I'm a family where my oldest child is just coming into a school system, I would hope that they would be put in the same pool as, as the others.
And so we're gonna work with the leadership group and bring that back next Wednesday night. Again, we changed the process from last year, you know, again, we, we're responding, so we'll go over that with the leadership.
And we need to iron this out now, so, Mr. Pavlichek?
Just going back to the, the problem we had last year, principal por, proportion of it arose from the fact we had four kindergartens at Cunningham and only three first grades. And that four into three just didn't work, people had to move. But if, if we go this route in just one giant pool, my worry is that, let's say, you're at the Glover and you have four kindergartens going into four first grades right now. We know we can do that. But also in the Glover, there's the, the element, the preschool over at, at St. Michael's Church is the Glover District. And if those people are, that is their local preschool, we could conceivably looking at five ki, classes of kindergartners moving into four classes of first grades, if all those people were, say Glover people, because it was a preschool in their neighborhood. We can, any, well, at that point, you can't guarantee all of your existing kindergarteners that they're gonna stay in first grade in that school regardless of what program they want. Because you have that still five into four mix. And that's what worries me is that we can't, the only reason this works, that we can sell people, you can stay in your home school is, we know how many there are coming up and I, and when you throw the private kindergartens into the mix, you don't know how many there are coming up into first grade, you don't know.
I, I think the big, the big piece of work that the World Language Committee did just in general was to try to organize the work as best we could and organize the structure of how we did this, uh, in minimizing the variables of going into kindergarten and then going into grade one. And one way of minimizing that variable was to set up our kindergartens to reflect the same amount of seats moving into first grade. And there are other variables, um, our students new to the district and students who we traditionally move in at grade one, that we have to adapt to. But we were just trying to set up an organization that, that we could minimize as many variables as we could. And it's not perfect, but we, we're hoping that it, it allows for seat for seat to be available, uh, with all due respect. And I think the people who decide to go to St. Agatha's Kindergarten or wherever, who have been paying taxes for the last five years, they, they do have a lot of rights and they do have a, a pretty good argument there that, hey, I chose to go to a private kindergarten, why wouldn't I be in that mix? We're not saying nobody, we're not saying that anybody cannot have either program. Uh, we're saying that we have planned accordingly for the students that we have in place. We have an organizational structure that we put in place to feed kindergarten into grade one as succinctly as we can. And then we will place you after that, uh, because it, it just don't, it, it's just organizationally, the, the best way we can do it, given the variables.
And I guess I would just point out that organizationally, there is assumption here. And the assumption is if we have four classes of kindergarten, that fifty percent will choose French and fifty percent will choose English. If that percentage changes, it doesn't matter whether we get ten kids in from a private school placement, all of the dynamics of the move-through within that system get thrown asunder.
But we can still guarantee they'll stay in that school if they, they just won't get the necessary choice of program. I mean, if you have four moving into four.
What we say is we're guaranteeing English. If all of a sudden, the percentages change and it's not sixty, thirty-eight, it could be the other way. Then all, you know, what we're saying here goes out the window.
Well, we could have three English classes and one French.
Right.
Well, I, I get, I-
The point being is that we, you know, yes, we're trying to create structure, which I think is, is, is really needed. But within that structure, I think we need to be thinking of how we treat people. And, you know, again, if, if we're working on the same timeline, I, I think that, to the extent that we can. And granted, if you look at the numbers and there's, you know, fifty people coming in from, from private placements, obviously that throws everything out the window. But if it's a couple in every neighborhood, I guess I feel really badly that we're separating those families.
And, and those were, I'm not saying, oh, I never thought about those people before, they spoke up last year. And again, um, we, uh, this isn't, this isn't easy work, so we'll step back, look at it, and um, then come back to the committee. But, any other committee input?
I, I just wanna make one final uh, closing comment on my own, on my own behalf, just the fact that kindergarten is not mandatory. And so how can we, although research shows and everyone knows that it's crucial, that early education is crucial. So, um, although we, I agree that we want to say that we have enough seats for our kindergartners to move into first grade and that's absolutely good practice and good policy. Um, but we can't mandate that students attend kindergarten either, so that might throw another monkey wrench in the mix, so. Um, any other comments, Mr. Cohen?
But, but I think you're right in, in giving the kindergartners who went to our kindergarten priority in getting into the French in their, in their district. And the new kids coming in, if they have to go to a different district, well, so be it. The issue I have is that if the child is in French immersion and a sibling is coming up, that kid can be put to a different school and I think that's unfair. Because, you know, you have, families set themselves up for the French immersion. And the, the next child coming up potentially may have to go into English if they can't get into the French in their home district. And I think that's more disruptive than sending a new kid to a different district.
Different part of the district.
Right.
I would rather keep- I would rather keep siblings together in the same program than a new kid coming into the district. I have no problem sending him to the other side of town, because it's new, that's all they will know, right? But breaking up siblings, I think, I think will be a problem, especially for families that have set themselves up for the French immersion.
And, and I have to tell you, if I closed my eyes, we were in this library last year with the parents. So, you all, the six of you, five of you, have voiced the concerns of all of the parents. So, we'll step back from it, we'll meet with the leadership team, and present next Wednesday night. And any input that you-